Good evening, everybody. My name is Tracy Keller. I'm the Vice Chair of the Planning Board. Bill is unavailable, so conduct our meeting in his absence. Gail.
Marshall.
And.
Alan Kimberley.
And Dan Burke.
And Dalton.
I will move to make Dan a voting number of the work committee.
I'll say that. All those in favor? So the second thing here on active call order is approval of minutes and I have minutes from our last meeting of June 25, 2025. I move approval. All those in favor? So the first, we have four conditional use applications this evening. The first condition, that use application number 009 of 2025. The owner's name is Eric D. and Jennifer F. Myers. Agent is Susan Schoolhoff of WMH Architects. The location is Five Hills Road, Seal Harbor, tax map one, lot 006-009, Zone Rural Woodland 3. The purpose is section 6B, eight fences and walls exceeding six foot height limitation under the CEO's authority. And we had a site inspection today at 4:30. I attended. You attended. Would you care to give a say?
Sure.
Do we want to talk about notices?
Can anybody that hasn't printed their name on the sign sheet, will you sign your name? For this first application, notices were given, sent out to Butters by way of the letter of June 24, 2025. Put your name on the sign sheet, please. There were five Butters notified. Disappeared in Mount Desert Islander on Thursday, June 26, 2025. Does anybody have any conflict of interest here on the board?
No, I don't.
Understood. On the other side, does it?
We went and saw the fence down the Hills Road, and the fence was already there. So I guess this is an after the fact permit. And it was hiding a very large generator and electrical panels, very, very large. And like I said, it was already, already there. Looked quite nice.
Alright.
There, it's a garage building across the driveway from the house. And there's a fence in the front part of the garage. The side is open and there's a fence on the back side of the permit.
Would you like to give a little presentation on your project? If you can stand up here and speak loudly toward this item.
We don't, we don't have a recording center. I've basically performed secretary, so she's got to reconstruct this from this. So she's got to give all of us, and if you can listen to us all at a later date, then it'd be some sort of reward for going to see your mother.
Understood. So as Alan mentioned, this is a request for an after the fact permit for the fence which was built above the six feet. The posts are at 84 inches high. As Alan noted, it shields a very large generator, multiple electric panels. And there are no neighbors around that it visually impacts.
It's across the road from the main residence.
Flended Hills Road, the residence is on the right, the garage is on the left.
Would we plan our application complete?
I move the application is complete.
Second, Dan, Alan Kimberley.
Then we hold it there and we go through.
No, no, we vote on it.
We, we vote on the completeness. Okay, all those in favor?
I move approval of the, okay. Just give them off.
I second that.
Then we pass. We still using short form?
I think we're using now.
Yeah, I think we're using the same.
Okay.
I move we use a short form, but this is okay.
Second up, Alan Kimberley.
And I, do I do others in favor? I?
Yes.
Summary here. The applicant seeks the after the fact conditional use approval for fences built to shield the utility hub adjacent to garage generator and system. Fence as built exceed 72 inches high allowed without a permit. Please attach annotated photographs denoting measurements, posts and panels for the two portions of fence as well as the L03 dated March 25, 2024 showing fence and garage location relating to Hills Road. Road facing side of the fence is setback approximately 80 feet from Hills Road. And the rear portion is approximately 25 feet from the setback. There's no fence on the east side. Property located at Five Hills Road in Seal Harbor. Onto the section six standards for uses permits and applicants. Six A general performance standards. Six A1 compatibility. It says physical size. Again, the road facing side south of the fence measures 7, 170 inches long with four posts measuring six inches wide by 86 inches high. There are three panels measuring 36 wide by eight inches high, 54 inches wide by 82 inches high and 58 inches wide by 82 inches high. The bearing north measures 118 inches long with three posts measuring six inches wide by 86 inches high. There are two panels measuring 50 feet wide by 68 and a half to 69 inches high. Visual impact. The fence hides the utility hub consisting of a generator, propane tank, and electrical boxes. Approximately to other structures, the fence is directly adjacent to the garage. Density of development. The garage and fences are the only structures on this portion of the property. Six, six A1 compatibility, I'm going to say C application. It's A point two erosion sedimentation control. NA fence has already been completed. So I'll say C application. Six A22 removal of sand and gravel, removal of sand or gravel from natural beaches or disruption of removal of bumper strips. That's an NA. Highway safety. Fence is located approximately 80 feet off a private roadway. Six A4 impact on town services. Says none. Six A5 land suitability. Fence is located on flat, stable ground. See application. Six A point six lighting outdoors. It's N A. Six A7 stormwater. Six A8 vegetation. Speaks about tree removal near town or state roads and slash, and applicant has marked NA. Six A9 dust, fumes, vapors, odors, and gases in A. So for this. I'm six, six A. The only applicable parts are six A2, six A1, six A2, and six A5 for which the standard has been met. So. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So now what's the next part? Six B1 agriculture. Who with spreading and disposal of manure in A. Six B7 is the next thing on the list here, and it has to do with excavation other than gravel pits or filling. That has been marked in A. Six B8 fences and walls. Advocate has marked applicable standard net. Fence was constructed exceeding six feet in height. It does not obstruct highway visibility. The structural side does not face the public view. Need to go through all of these other ones. Three 16 fine regulations. Here. This list says mineral exploitation, but we don't have it on our. Fine regulations. Six B18 wireless communication facilities. In A. Standards for same. In A on the application. Animal husbandry too, having to do with chickens. Six B20 mobile food vendors in A. Right, we're still addressing mobile food vendors here. I guess we'll just take that without the one name. And six B21, living houses in A. Health and my health. And A. This says in A except for section 6B fences and walls. Eight.
I think that defines the third and completely is a law that six B is not applicable except for six B8 for which the standard is up.
Second up.
All of them favor? Aye.
I'm just going to move that this. I move that the application indicates that this property is on Rural Woodland 3, and therefore is not, and there's no indications in the shoreline zone. So that none of the provisions of six one, six C or five, five nine, five nine.
There's these two.
These are important.
So, all the favor? And we circle back to the third.
Won't be under any conditions.
Then should we vote on it? All those in favor? Let me check that.
Yeah.
Then. We do this. Online. The, this. Second item here is a conditional use approval. Patient 10-2025, the owner's name is John F. Drucker. Sorry. 2003 family trust, the agent is Tom Wallace. The location is One Harbor Side Road, Northeast Harbor, tax map 25, lot 56. Donas Village Residential 1. The purpose is section 6B, eight fences and walls for a six foot setback waiver request from the edge of a right of way. We had a site inspection today at 5:25. And this is to Butters who are sent out by the town Mount Desert by way of letter dated June 26, 2025. Eight separate Butters were notified. And this was published also in the June 26, 2025 publication of the Mount Desert Islander. Any conflicts here on this board for this matter?
Down here? No.
Alright. Very good. And.
Site visit. Earlier today, this is a property down a small lane of Main Street in room corner here in Northeast Harbor. It's a new construction on a preexisting house site. As was, there is a preexisting fence that this section of fence would match on the other side of the driveway opening. The driveway opening, we're told, is the same as it was prior to the rebuild. The right of way, interestingly, that this interferes with is owned only by the property owners themselves. There's no one else who owns the right of way over that strip on the north side of the driveway. And it's they've already got the post, they've already got one of the posts in place, and it's pretty obvious where they're going to put a short length fence to match the other fence.
I concur.
With someone, the applicant likes to give a presentation.
I have Tom Wallace, I'm the contractor for the Jerome's, and we're actually present. Originally, when I applied for the other fence application for the permit, which is five foot eleven. That was granted because we met the setback from the right of way. And Ken told me in order to get the other one, you have to do this very, like you said before, this only affects the owners themselves, right? There's no other people that have right of ways down too. So the driveway entrance is the same place it always was. I think existing original house, the 52. So I have seen him back to it. Excellent. That's with me five foot eleven fence.
Okay, thank you very much.
You ever been in? I move we use the short form of this application.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Need to find the application complete for.
Now we, I move from the application complete.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move approve the application.
Okay, so. Section, section 6B, eight fences and walls. Six A1 compatibility. It says the physical size, the fence panel is 13 feet wide by 71 inches tall. The visual impact, this is does not block highway visibility or seeing view, matches the style of existing fence along property line. Proximity to other structures unless property line at the end of the right of way. Density of development is in A. Oh, for six B one, I'm just gonna check off the application.
Six A.
Six A. Six A two erosion and sedimentation control. Says N A. Six A two, two removal of sand or gravel, removal of sand or gravel from natural beaches or the disruption of removal or removal of buffer strips to protect fragile land areas immediately behind a shoreline or neighboring properties prohibited. It said N A. Um, tilling of soil is N A. Six A three highway safety says no impact in a. Go mark in a. Six A five land suitability. No impact. Of there. Act on town services and six A six lighting. In a. More water, it says in a. Six A eight vegetation in a. Six A nine dust, fumes, vapors and odors and gases and a. But four, six A one compatibility. Of the other sections, uh, are relevant and all not applicable.
I move the finding effect conclusion will go out with the provisions of six A have been met.
Second thought.
All of them in favor?
All. Hi.
Go on to six B specific performance standards for activities in land uses. Six B ones agriculture, it says, um, in a. Sixty seven excavation other than gravel pits in a. Six B eight fences and walls. This says. That says the structural side of the fence shall not face public view. A code enforcement officer, officer permit may be issued for solid fences and walls. Um, this has not been completed, this section and, um, if you think your standards have been met, can you, can you come up and mark the original form? Is this part of here? I'll read that whole part. Um, a code enforcement officer permit may be issued for solid fences or walls up to six feet in height, provided that a setback of six feet is maintained from roads, sidewalks and right of ways. It does not obstruct highway visibility. A plan for vegetative screening in the six foot setback area is provided that produces a minimum of twenty percent coverage of the fence or wall area. The plan must be implemented and maintained. And then fences or walls do not meet the above criteria shall require conditional use approval of the planning board.
And, um, should you note that it's thirteen feet long by seventy one inches? Like is that, so it meets that standard. That, yeah, that's in the.
Oh, yes.
That's. Yeah, just note that it's under.
Um, I will note it on here. So that is applicable standard net. Um, six B sixteen sign regulations. And a. Wireless can six B eighteen wireless communication facilities in aid. Design stand. If there is a wireless communications facilities, animal husbandry are two sixteen B nineteen. And we'll have to agree to in the village commercial and shoreline commercial district and a. Mobile food vendors and a. Uh, roaming house and a. Hotels and motels and a. Solar energy system. So, uh, here. This, I'm gonna mark off and I accept for section six B eight.
I move the, the provisions of six B eight, six B do not apply except for six B eight fences and walls. And although technically the fence proposed is, does not make the setback um, from the right of way. It's within the board's jurisdiction to grant this as a conditional use because the only right of way affected is the right of way of the property, the applicant.
No, second thought.
All those in favor?
I. And I'm going to also move that sixty and five nine do not shoreline zoning standards do not apply because this application is referenced to without being B R one and is not within the shoreline.
Second thought.
And in fact, in.
So. V R one, V R one district. Properties of the V R one districts of shoreline zoning.
No, not aware of any, anybody aware of conditions. No.
All of them in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Second. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Third item, seeming additional use of approval application number eleven, two thousand twenty five. The owner's name is Dylan Carroll. Location is two one two Kimball Camp Road, Mount Desert. X map eighteen lot three, so residential two. Purpose is section three point four animal husbandry, husbandry, the care and keeping of poultry. Eight chickens. Oh, does the board, anyone on the board have a conflict to vent this with this matter?
Nope.
Would anything like to, um, before I say her, I'm gonna move to be found.
Oh.
I'll start this up.
All those in favor?
Uh, hi.
Site visit?
We, um, visited Dylan and his wife at their property. Um, we visited the site where the chickens had a nice coop and looked to be very well taken care of. Um, it's pretty simple and straightforward visit. Anything to add to that?
I, I, I would just add to the site visit that this, the house is set there from the road. It's a dirt road. Um, house setback in the road and a chicken coop is some parallel with the house. So the chicken coop is also set back from the road. There's ruins around the property. I wasn't, I didn't notice that there was a property adjacent. There was a building adjacent to the side of the property that was the coop line. Um, they're in the process of landscaping it. Yeah, landscaping it, so it should be in good form. Once the hager seating takes effect. Um, yeah, and that's the, the chicken coop is painted to match the house. So it's got its private, private run, a, a separate run and it's got a house, isn't closed.
Yep.
I'm first gonna, um, say that this, uh, there's a public notice given to a butters by letter dated June twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five. Seven butters were notified. And it was also, uh, published in the Mount Desert Islander on June twenty sixth, two thousand twenty five.
And we move, we approve the application.
Second thought.
All the favor?
No, yeah. Oh, okay.
Would you like to give a presentation, come up here and just talk about what you?
Dylan Carroll and the owner of the property and chickens and I like fresh eggs and considering I was paying eleven dollars for a dozen S O S's past winter. I'm looking forward to get some eggs. And I, I take good care of that.
I move reuse short form for this application.
Second thought.
All the favor?
Bye. Bye.
Okay, um, does anybody, uh, else, uh, here attending the meeting have any public comment on this application? I heard. So I will, uh, just launch into it here. So, uh, this application says, uh, permit number eleven, two thousand twenty five. And Dylan, uh, Carroll wrote, I am requesting conditional news approval to have up to eight chickens. The standard, section six standards for uses permission approvals, six A general performance standards. Section eight, section A one compatibility. The chicken coop will be six feet four inches by six feet four inches. And chicken run slash pen will be nine feet four inches by eight feet. The visual impact, the chicken coop and chicken run slash pen will be seen from Kimball Camp Road. Uh, proximity to other structures, it just says C attached site plan. Dead sea of development, it says currently there is one family residential dwelling unit and a shed. So I'm going to say, uh, see application. Um, six A two erosion and sedimentation control is N A. Uh, six and six A seven, six A three says highway safety and a. Six A four impact on town services and a. Six A five land suitability. Says N A. Six A six lighting outdoors. Says N A. Six A seven stormwater. It says N A. Six A eight vegetation. A. Six A nine dust, fumes, vapor, odors and gases. It says applicable standard met. Pine shavings will be within the coop and natural ground as we exist will be within the run and pen area. If the area gets muddy from the rain, we will add pine shavings within the run pen area. The applications.
As opposed about line suitability, should we actually find that on any, or should we find that this, that the individual is met? The premises. It's flat, it's, there's A and A.
So having to do with, um, general performance standards. The, um, other than six A one compatibility and six, six A nine, uh, which are addressed in this application, I find all other of, um, sections here are not applicable.
Move that as findings, fact conclusions of law are the six A, uh, sections are only, the only ones come applicable are six A one and six A nine for which the standards have been.
Second thought.
All those in favor?
Hi.
I. Go on to. Go on to. 6B1 agriculture, all spreading or disposal of manure shall be accomplished in performance for the main guidelines for manure sludge disposal on land. Says applicable standard met, the plan to maintain the coop, the pen run area is every week, however, it may be up to every three weeks depending on the chickens. Plan is to chop back the used shavings and take them away from property. 6B1.
Have I asked you this, I mean this, 6B1 seems to refer to civic sludge under civic 1972 law. Wouldn't this be NA and the language without taking care of the manure, actually go on back under the dust and fumes and so forth. 6A, I guess that's your call. And it's just he was addressing the turd. You know, because of how it's gonna be. I'm confused by the section because I think it applies to a civic.
Yeah.
A little more about not, I mean, yeah, so I'm just exactly that.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say the application.
Okay, I think we're getting there, but.
So then we skip to 6B7 is the next one having to do with gravel picks and it says NA. 6B8 fences and walls NA. Section 6B. 16. Sign regulation size limit is NA. And it's all under one. On 6B18 is wireless communications facilities. NA. Finally, we come to section 6B19 Animal Husbandry 2 in the Village Commercial and Shoreland Commercial District. I'm going to read this.
First part is NA. It's NA, you know. Oh, is this not a most important? I got hung up on that. When I asked him, the town voted down the, at one point, the extension of this ordinance to include other zones. But just to be sure, we don't want roaches insects in person.
6B20 mobile food vendors. 6B21 moving houses. NA. Hotels and motels NA. Six.
Well, we don't have any application.
So except for section 6B1, all the other components of this section are not applicable.
I move there is a finding effect and conclusions of law, the provisions of 6B are not applicable except for 6B1.
All of us in favor?
I move that this is not in a shoreline zone, it's in a residential 2 district. And therefore, the provisions, none of the provisions of 6C or 5, 9 are good. As a matter of fact.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Got the conditions, I may make this on sometimes. This one is not. I don't know. But that's worked. It's not interesting.
All those in favor of approval of this application?
Aye.
Aye.
And final matter for this evening is the conditional use of approval application number 12 2025. The owner's name is Town of Mount Desert, agent in Greg Johnson of GF Johnson Associates. Location is 40 Harbor Drive, Northeast Harbor, tax map 24 lot 148, zone is the Shoreline Commercial Zone. Purpose section 3.4 recreational outdoor recreational facilities, reconstruction of existing tennis courts. New courts will allow tennis, pickleball and ice skating. This was sent to abutters by the Town of Mount Desert by a letter notice dated June 24, 2025. Seventeen abutters were notified. This was published in the Mount Desert Islander on June 26, 2025. Are there any conflicts of interest on this board? Down?
Yes, I think Alan has a problem with it. The reason being is he spoke up in town meeting against this project.
I'll set aside for this. Yeah, I did.
You have to go on. I move we accept the refusal on Alan's request of this.
All those in favor?
We need some.
All of them. All those in favor?
Aye.
I guess I get to go home. Which I should. Okay.
I'm gonna find the application.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Since we have lost another member, believe me.
No, Ian already is. Sorry. Rossa.
Under the circumstances. Who would like to report on second?
Sure, y'all convened down at the marina. And observed the tennis courts as they are now. Yes, the project is to reconstruct what is existing. Slightly enlarge the footprint by four feet on one side and eight feet on the other. And level the whole thing off. And to do so, they need to do some excavation so they can make a nice solid foundation. They're going to reuse or redo the chain link fence around the whole site. Part of this will also be to add pickleball and improve the boost of the area, it's a hockey rink in the winter. Ice hockey, yeah. There's going to be an addition for the chiller that's needed, which will be tacked on to the east side, no, west side. West side, and that's going to be on a concrete pad and surrounded by an eight foot fence for privacy and noise protection. What else?
There's an EV.
Oh, EV charging station, which will be closer to the the Harbor Master Marina bathroom facility, yes. That's all I got.
Greg, would you like to stand up here? Where do we hear?
I think that description of the site visit, can I actually describe that we probably put it in context, that can help me up here.
Yes, that's fine.
It's hard to, sometimes with both these things, I'm taking advantage of. So we're, again, the town had been planning to reconstruct the tennis courts to go hard work of a private group who's maintaining the rink down there. Inside to collaborate and make it a longer term venture. The ice skating is necessarily a change of use in the recreational, but it happens sporadically because of the weather. You can't really plan events and classes because of how difficult it is. And so this would extend its time to maybe four to five months. And so while the courts being reconstructed, making a hard look at the volunteer group that's helped contribute to this. The chilis underneath the courts, courts within the surface also to accept ball or tennis. And it's a sports court type surfacing, this kind of visual what it is. It's a surfacing, a poly surface interaction frozen into the ice. And it's striking against both sports. Again, this is sort of gonna get us orientated. The Harbor Masters offices down here, there's an existing transformer feeds that building. There'll be another transformer set, so the energy and consumption is dedicated, this is working with the rain or operations. And with that, town's had a long term plan of maybe putting level three chargers in there, which would charge our half hour and 50 minutes. I don't know, maybe whether it is one, I think that's a pay for EV. And those are be located, of course, closer to where the transformers are, say this is the bathroom. Masters office in these parts of spots. Again, you did mention the chunks, there's an area at the end that will be fenced in, sort of try to describe the fences, inspirational, but the fence itself is sort of double sided. Visually screened but airily passed through. It's also for sound transmission. And there are lights that are going to be added, just an increase of tennis time, pickleball time. Visual impact, just a dark sky applying fully cut off and temperature. So I think that generally describes it, if you have more specific stuff as we get to the land disorders, but happy to take questions as that comes up. And chiming a few things to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any members in the public who'd like to, on order in? Did you chance anybody who wants to speak on this?
I could add something.
Please do.
Yes. My name is Kathy Miller. And I live in Solmsville, but I work here in Northeast Harbor. And I'm a member of the town's economic development committee. And part of our ongoing goal is to have more people in town, in Northeast Harbor, especially to support the businesses that are here in the winter or that used to be here in the winter. And having this rink, we have seen how it has become a real attraction for people to come from all over the island, but well beyond that as well, to come into Northeast Harbor. And so our ultimate goal is to have regular commerce, so we'll have more than just the gas station that's open. But maybe have, you know, a restaurant that's open in the winter or shops that are open and benefit from having more people in town. So on that level, I think our town economic development committee would be very supportive of this project going forward.
Thank you.
I'm wondering if, in addition to perception that there'll be economic advantage to the town, if there's actually anywhere to demonstrate that, if there's any. Is there anywhere demonstrating that's actually more likely than not should. So I'll just put my other two questions out there. I have questions about noise as it relates to the sound pressure. So I'd like to know a little bit more about how often that operates. I think I saw the graph in here. It's awfully hard to tell by looking at a decimal graph because we know that you know, 70 is a whole lot more than 60, it's not just, and so forth, and this is rated at 80. It's somewhere in between a leaf blower, for which I always wear earphones, and a gas push mower below that, for which also all your ear, ear, ear protectors. So I'm just wondering if there's any sense of that relative, and the other noise issue I have is about pickleball. Pickleball during the daytime is busy down there, it's a, it's a commercial area. I've never been on pickleball court, I've never seen anybody play pickleball, but you can't ever, you can't read too much in the news without hearing that there are neighborhoods all over the country in which people are going crazy because suddenly this very busy pickleball floor is creating a kind of, apparently creating a kind of constant percussive noise. floor, that's creating a kind of, apparently creating a kind of constant percussive noise that drives a budding property or just community. And I wouldn't want you to, I don't know what your plans are for how, in the winter doesn't matter, I suppose, but people are likely to be playing pickleball in the summer or the warmer months, and I wonder if you have any of the designers of this have thought about that issue and have perspective on whether or not that's going to by allowing it to happen at night, whether in the summer, that's going to have any negative impact on neighbors, residential.
Happy to respond.
Thanks.
In order, so I think with the economic development, I think a lot of things are always test and trial, and the town themselves have to try new things to do. We know it's quiet here in winter. My personal experience is when we're down there, they have ice skating classes or tournaments. Restaurant benefits, everything in town benefits from activity, that's evident if you've been part of it. And certainly, as part of the case, certainly the EV charger, which is, there's no rapid EV charge, which actually is for paid for in town, certainly of benefit to the economics. So I think that's part of the application. And relative to the noise, which is one. So as you see, it's rated at E, right, a lawnmower, they mow the lawn down there is, is about the same as the decimal. And how often it comes on really depends on the weather. You set the temperature gauges, whether you want the ice hard or soft, and that could be at thirty-two. And so there could, a lot of period signs doesn't operate, and really depends on the weather. But also the fence, and so we've looked at different designs for the fence and the baffling of it. The fence design is, 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 is about roughly ten decibels less. It's that, what was it, even further down to more like a hair dryer. And you look at the chart, so thinking about, not only we consider though, what could we do to make it better? And, you know, we go through the words, like, what does it talk about? There's not a lot in there about, it talks about odor, dust, and toxins, but we're conscious, right? So what could we do? And so that's what we're writing the chart. We thought about fence designs, but research to reduce that, but also having the devices on the outside. So I think that although it's not a direct standard in the ordinance, I feel like we knew we'd discuss and provide evidence in the, in the documentation to address that question.
And it will be in the winter, unlike.
Weather. And pickleball, you know, I guess my only thoughts, I don't have a decimal chart on pickleball in the application, which I had now when I hear the question. But I don't feel as much different than a lot of tennis play as well. With the balls, when you're down there, yes, you hear the balls, but you hear everything else that's active in and around the arena, you hear you have the food trucks there running noise, you have a lot of activity, and I think it's part of the fabric. And of course, recreation has noise to it. That's offensive in a way. But maybe others have other experience, so.
Oh my gosh, there's so many stories about it driving people insane, but it's, it's the question of nighttime. I think that's the difference, like daytime, it's like, there's noise, it's a marina.
All addressed, because I had, in this entire time, I don't think it was part of the application in any way, but the the lights are not going to be accessible for people to turn them on at will. They'll be on and off on a timer. And that timer will be set to ensure that there's not two thirty AM after bar, pickleball. It's going to be a reasonable period of time, it's going to be very limited lighting in summer because we do football days. So it's not going to extend into nighttime work.
I suppose there'll be another, I suppose if it is a problem, there'll be a different board here that has to hear it.
It is strength for pickleball now, so we do have pickleball players in some of the do play down there. At this time, I have not received any complaints.
Okay.
As of yet, it's pretty good, so.
Thank you.
The person back.
I have to say, Erica Mitchell, I don't know a lot about pickleball, but I've read probably those articles that you've seen in the paper. And so I was kind of curious about the sound too, and I walk down there a lot all during the day. And it's almost, I almost always see people playing pickleball over tennis right now. I don't think it's much louder, and I think that the articles that we read in the paper are actually more about large places in New York City with many, many pickleball courts, all going at once and sort of reverberating off the buildings. I, I was just there the other day, I didn't think it was, it is a little different sounding than tennis, but I didn't notice that it was much louder than any of this.
Yes, sir.
My name's Jamie Blaine, and I live in Northeast Harbor. So I'd like to speak to Carol's point about economic development, it is, it is really a, a dream. But we, so the rake is about recreation for kids and for families, and it's been fabulous, but more than that, it's about creating a sense of community here in the winter, and I really think it's been that, and it's bringing people in from way beyond this village. And so we asked yesterday for people to send us emails about the impact of the rake on them, and in less than twenty-four hours, I have here fifty one letters that we've received from people from as far away as Deer Isle, Blue Hill. So they're coming here, they, the economic development piece, I think, really relies on this new rake, because we, they can plan, they can come, we can have events. And, and they, they don't just get up in the morning and check Facebook and see whether there's ice that day, they will know that there are flies. So I think that piece is really an important piece, and, but I think the community piece is even more important.
Any other comments at all?
Well, I didn't.
For sure. Names.
Yes, I guess I will.
I move here as a short form for this application. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Obviously, I've both the public comment here. So with the short form here. It has launched on this. The front page.
I'm trying to remember if I've already moved. Prove the. Let's just do it. Move the application. Okay.
One second.
All the, no? Oh, then.
I'm going to channel Bill here, now we press pause.
Okay. So, on this application, apartment number twelve, two thousand twenty-five. It says, the construction of an outdoor recreational facility, project is constructed of tennis courts and additional addition of cooling loops for ice skating, installation of a level three EV rapid charger for municipal parking. Then we get to section six A one compatibility. There's the physical size, the courts are in the same footprint as existing, new courts are to be larger by four feet on one side and eight feet on the other. This allows for the fencing and installation, insulation requirements for the slab. Visual impact, the courts are similar to existing, the condenser pad will be screened with a dual sided fence. Additional screening will be installed around the fence in, fenced in mechanical pad. Proximity to other structures, the activity is planned in an area that has historically had the same uses. The courts will occupy the same footprint while mechanical knees have, have been moved to an area remote from the structure and workspaces. Density of development, the changes do not increase density of development, however, they do increase the available time of for recreational uses in the village area. The six A one compatibility, the application.
I move the standards that finding fact and conclusions of law are the standards of six A. Second.
Oh, but that's okay. Six A two erosion and sedimentation control. Best management practices will be adhered to, specifics are attached. So that's, I'm going to, and then it says removal of sand and gravel, removal of sand and gravel from natural beaches, or this disruption or removal of buffer strips that protect fragile land areas immediately behind the shoreline and on neighboring properties is prohibited, this says applicable standard met. The erosion and sedimentation control, the application. Six A three highway safety, the construction will take place during the off season to minimize traffic. Area of staging materials to inside the fence, adequate space exists between existing parking and the courts for safe staging of deliveries. Sufficient offshore parking shall be available with construction during the off season, ample parking is available for workers. The six A three, the application. Six A four, impact on town services, no new town services requested. Six A four, C application. Land suitability, existing test courts you use and use as an ice rink support the conclusion that the land is suitable for the use as proposed. Use equals the existing. Six A five, C application. Six A six lighting outdoors. Okay, six lights are being added to three holes on each side of the court. The lights are rated for dark sky compliance and will extend playtime for both pickleball and ice skating on the bank. Says applicable standard met, so I'm going to write C application. Six A seven stormwater. Says adequate drains exist in the adjacent parking area to provide drainage to the structure. Subdrains will protect the infrastructure and surface drains will collect any excess runoff and roots to areas of sumps with grit removal in the storm system. And it is, there is marked off applicable standard met, so I'm going to say C application. Six A eight vegetation. A cedar shrub will be removed and replaced with this, with the setting of the mechanical pad, the vegetation is noted on the plan. It's marked applicable standard met, so I'm going to write C application. Dust, fumes, vapors, odors, and gases, dust control is specified during construction in the erosion control specifications, no permanent dust, fumes, vapors, odors, or gases are expected. And applicable standard met has been marked. So for six A, all sections are addressed within the application.
And I thought, I move as a finding fact and conclusions law that the standards of six A have been met.
All those in favor?
Oh, wait a second.
Oh, sorry, you're second. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's a specific performance standards for activities and land uses. Six B one agriculture, has to do with all spreading or disposable of manure. And it's marked N A. Six B seven excavation of the gravel pits or filling. The excavation is only ancillary to the proposed reconstruction, the box applicable standard met has been marked, and I'm going to say C application. Then there's six B eight fences and walls. The fencing that exists is going to be repurposed into a chain link fence, which is approximately ten feet tall and will be reused around the rink by this application. A non-solid staggered wood fence eight feet tall is requested to be installed around the mechanical pad. The applicant has checked applicable standard met. And then writes C application. Six B sixteen side regulations, N A, as no sign is requested. On to six B eighteen wireless communication facilities. None are proposed as part of this project, the applicant's written N A, so I will mark down N A. Six B nineteen animal husbandry two. None proposed as part of this project, N A. Obel food vendor, six B twenty. N A, none proposed as part of this project. Six B twenty-one, rooming houses, none proposed as part of this project. Lost the board in the room. Motels and motels, six B twenty-two, none proposed as part of this project. Solar energy systems, which I don't find here. So for six B, but for the standards of six B seven and six B eight which are addressed in this application, all the other components are not applicable.
I move it as finding fact and conclusion law that the only applicable standards are six B seven and six B eight, full wish the standards have been met.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Land zoning standards. Land use standard, all land use activities from the shoreline zone shall conform with the following provisions if, if applicable. Is applicable standard met, we'll start off with six C one agriculture and animal husbandry. None proposed for this project, the application is marked N A there. Six C two, archaeological sites. The site is already developed for the recreational facility and is not part of an archaeological site. This is marked applicable standard met. Six C five, essential services. There's none proposed as part of this project, it's marked N A, I will mark this central services, N A. Six C six parking areas. No new parking areas are proposed as part of this project. Applicable standard met, going to mark a C application. Six C seven, here's docks, warped bridges, no structures, and uses extending over and below the normal high water line within a wetland. None proposed as part of this project, N A. 69 roads and driveways. No new roads or driveways are proposed as part of this project, N A. 6C11 water quality. The courts do not discharge any flutensilicant or any dangerous substances. Applicable standard met. The application.
So I move that the provisions of 6C2, 6C6, and 11 are applicable to this project. And as a matter of finding the fact and conclusions of all those standards have been met and all of provisions are none.
Favor? There is a 59. Do with all shoreline areas, 5.9.1 will maintain safe and healthful conditions. See application. 5.9.2 will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation to surface waters. See application. 5.9.3 will adequately provide for disposal of all wastewater, not applicable. 5.9.4 will not have adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, wildlife, bird, or other wildlife habitat. See application. 5.9.5 will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland and coastal waters. The application. 5.9.6 will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan. The application. 5.9.7 will not adversely affect existing commercial fishing or maritime activities in the shoreline commercial district. To mark in A. 9.7. 5.9.8 will avoid problems associated with the floodplain development and use in compliance with the floodplain management ordinance of the town of Montesert amended March 7, 2006. Not applicable.
It's not in the flood zone, so it's applicable. But also they're not structured and regulated by.
Then section 5.9.9 is in conformance with the provisions of section 6A, 6B, and 6C. I'm going to admit.
I move that provisions 5.9.1, 5.9.2, 5.9.4, 5.9.5, 5.9.6, 5.9.7, 5.9.9 are applicable. And the board finds is not finding fact and conclusions of law that those standards have been met. And the provision 5.9.8, and 5.9.3, and 5.9.8.
I'll second that. All those in favor? So we're going back to the. All those in favor of approving this application?
Aye.
The site rate bigger than the lot of water falls down.
Going to be a Sam Boney.
These are the large.
Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, baby.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I have a question. Where Tracy's not going to be here at the end, please, should you vote an acting chair where she's a vice chair?
Well, we could in the absence, assuming, assuming for the second discussion of Bill's money.
Well, I would, well, yeah, because typically who's the next in charge, right? So where she's the chair, acting chair, and she's a vice chair. I think it'd be wise to probably point someone now so that when you open the meeting, it's just. It's about subdivision ordinance and legislative statutes. There's no applications. But I just thought it'd be wise.
Who's the next, most senior member?
That's me. Basically, he is. You're right.
No, yeah, you're right. Like by days, yeah.
And that house is not here.
I don't know about that.
Yeah. I propose we elect Kayla. She's here and willing.
I'm not voting, but you go ahead.
I would vote, I would vote, yeah.
We'll do our best and hopefully they'll elect you.
Can you make a motion on that?
Yeah.
Official motion. I will, I move to.
Very temporary.
Elect Shale as temporary chair for the July 2030 meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye. Saturn burns.
All right, Anne said it, and now you can debate again. What was other breakfast? Jen, I just asked it implied to schedule. I mean, ever since Alan said, oh, let's do a tug against the meeting. This is a little too tight. It won't be an issue next time, of course. We want to have a set business and that's a good thing. But this was like, I didn't go to the ones who. Yes. And now it's up in traffic. It's hard to try to do timeframes because I'm trying to do the geographic and I ain't considering traffic. It's just hard because the site doesn't typically is just like a visual.
Yep.
It's, but there are questions sometimes asked, but technically you shouldn't be having discussions there because they should be done in the meeting.
Neighbors can show up.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So it's kind, it's like hard for me to try to figure. So I even asked him a couple times, what do you think of this time? You know, I mean. And most of us live over in that sun. And I wanted, Alan wanted it moved to later in the daytime, so.
Yeah, I have no problem with that, but maybe like with four of them. I mean, what's that?
Rare that we actually get two or four C U As.
Anyway. I know, I know this is no, but you left it.
Yeah.
On step on perfect solution. When I looked at it, there was a pre-exam, even though it sounded like, you know.
Yeah, so another question, comment. Buckeyes seem to be after the fact. How like are they, site inspections that you're doing and seeing these? People just willing.
What do you mean? I mean, like.
Like these first two and like I think of goats a few months ago.
Yeah, that was the one thing. But I mean, chickens, the chickens are already on site, actually.
Yeah.
And he's allowed to have eight only because he's in a different zone. Other than six.
Yeah.
Commercial. Rules, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, technically, I could say, you know what? You can't go to the board until you're a member of it.
Yeah.
Most of the application that we dealt with that Kim violation notice and indicated they were going to be fined every day that you kept violating. And that's just sort of like. I mean, you have to kind of. Strike a balance, I think, but it's. And I rely on the fact that she's already been to these sites like that. Right away, Fats, like, she's already like.
So they like for this, the one in CL Harbor that existed, they had a building for that fence already?
Yeah, I went to do an occupancy on the house. And that's where, that's when I saw. But I read the, everything I was like, and then I saw the fence. Oh, that's, that's more than a ball. And then I went, you know, I'm subject to inspection and that's the property with chickens. Yeah, I'm like, okay, because he put a shout out. But it was cool. You know, if they comply, work with me, I think that's, that's great. I mean, that's what you want, right? Yeah, it's after the fact, but like I said, you want me to make a rip it out and take it somewhere? No, but I mean, that's technically that's. Because I questioned one of that myself. I'm like, so how can these go, you know, go forward with an open nose and violation? But if they comply, do what they gotta do, then they'll pay like an after the fact for the building permit fee.
Do we do any pre-teaching? Because before I joined the planning board, I would have had no clue that you needed anything to have a couple chickens. I would not have known. Because I'm in rural zone myself and I would have thought, yeah, I can have a get you. But.
Always, always allow it. Well, without a permit. Okay, permitted. When you permit for a coup, maybe because that's a building and, you know, that stuff. But I mean, the ordinance is, and Colin asking, you know, really is alien education. I can offer unless you want me to sit and go through the ordinance during the meeting.
I mean, the truth is their punishment is that you have to go through this last. My application, which is always completely irrelevant to this situation.
We're working on that, right? That was last meeting.
Yeah, so. I was the reward for coming and complying with, setting throughout process. Thank you. I vote for a chair.
And that's a wrap.
All in favor? I'm meeting in adjourned.